This is a Board of Selectmen, the Newbury Selectmen's Annual Ethics Training with Town Council. I'm going to take a roll, I'd entertain a motion to open.
Motion to open, second.
Roll call vote, Mike Doyle.
Present.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jerk Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Present.
And Jerry will be yes. Okay. We have council tonight, take it away.
Thank you Chair and members of the board. What I have done is prepare a presentation over what you, the Chair and Associate Chair asked me, or Assistant Chair asked me to do is kind of go over a training we did a year or so ago again, and as part of your regular practice, and so that's what I've done. So I'm going to go over a couple of different things. One is the overarching controls of the Board of Selectmen and Town Management and Operations. Two, the Open Meeting Law. Three, the Public Records Law. And four, the Conflict of Interest Law. These are all very high-level reviews because otherwise we'd be here until Saturday. And the weather's going to get nice at the end of the week, so nobody wants to be here till Saturday. And so if you have any follow-up questions or questions as we go on, please feel free to ask, to drill down on anything, or I'm happy to answer questions of any member after this meeting, one-on-one, if you would like as well. So the first point is the overarching controlling laws and regulations or policies. So as the board is aware, Chapter 460 of the Acts of 2008 established a selectman, town administrator, former government in the town of Newbury. Then Chapter 447 of the Acts of 2008 increased the membership of the Board of Selectmen in the town of Newbury. And then in 2019, the Board adopted a Code of Ethics that governs the Board. And then we have the Open Meeting Law, which is Chapter 30A, Sections 19 to 25, the Public Records Law, Chapter 66, and the Conflict of Interest Law. So the configuration of the Board of Selectmen is in 2008, town voted to move from a three-person Board to a five-person Board. The Board acts as a whole, and so while each of you may be voted in separately, the Board doesn't have any of, each individual member has no authority unless the Board itself acts as a whole, or unless the Board votes to give that person authority to act. So a member may not make decisions on their own without a vote of the Board. And while it's important to represent constituents, acting alone carries no authority other than making their constituents' needs or wants or concerns known. Members should bring matters to the Board to realize full authority. So for example, if a Board member has an idea, let's say, let's say a Board member wants to make it easier for people to drop off their yard waste. Let's, I'm just going to use a, I'm just picking something out of the air. A Board member wants to make it easier to drop, have people drop off their yard waste. They can't go to the dump and tell, a member can't go to the dump and tell the person operating the dump, hey, you have to open up for six hours more during the week, right? That Board member needs to take it to the Board, have a discussion with the Board about the hours of the dump, and then they actually need to consult with the Town Administrator, who is in charge of the day-to-day operations of the town. So the Board is a policymaker, we're going to talk about that in a minute. But that's how it would happen. That Board member does not have the authority to go direct a department head or a department in and of itself to do things on their own without authority of the Board as a whole. And the Board as a whole is limited in its authority depending on what the administrative responsibilities are. At times, the Board also sits as another legal entity. So at times, you're actually not acting as a selectboard. You might be acting as a special permit granting authority. So under the zoning bylaw, the Board is assigned the responsibility to act as a special permit granting authority. So for example, on solar, large solar installations, the Board sits as a special permit granting authority, and they have to act under the rules of the zoning bylaw in General Law, Chapter 40A, which is the Zoning Act.
Actually Lisa, can I interrupt for a second? We, we changed our bylaw to make the planning board that.
For the solar, yes.
Yes.
But I was getting, you used to be that way.
Yeah.
But like, you know, I don't want to use any current examples. So, but there are times that the Board acts as a special permit granting authority. And you're governed on how you behave in that role based upon those rules and regulations, not the general Board of Selectmen rules and regulations. Also, you sit as a local licensing authority, right? So you have to act under the ABCC rules and regulations. Some towns have separate licensing authorities, but you act as a local licensing authority for the issuance of liquor licenses. And so you would act under the rules of the ABCC and their regulations related to that. Anybody have any questions about any of those points? All right. So the Town Administrator Act. At the same, in the same year that the Board went from a three-member Board of Selectmen to a five-member Board of Selectmen, it also adopted the Town Administrator Act by home rule petition. What that means is, and I just got them teaching this class to my Suffolk MPA program, is that your Town Administrators Act has the authority of a statute because it was adopted by home rule petition. So it's kind of like a charter, but better than that, it has the same authority as statute. And so if there's anything in the Town Administrators Act that conflicts with a statute, the Town Administrators Act controls because it was adopted by the state legislature. So it's like its own statute. With the adoption of the Town Administrators Act, the town moved from allowing one member of the Board to manage the town to hiring a professional to manage the town. So there was a time, as you know, when the Chair of the Board of Selectmen essentially did the day-to-day operations and management of the town with the assistance of a secretary. But now the Town Administrator manages the town. The Town, the administration of fiscal, prudential, and municipal affairs of the town remain in the executive branch, namely the Board, including the appointment of a police chief and its officers, Town Council and others. And the Board retained the authority to adopt policies and set forth the general direction of the town. The Board's required to hire a Town Administrator to supervise and manage the day-to-day operations of the town, to hire and fire personnel not otherwise designated to be appointed by the Board, to report to the Board on the operations of the town, to create and administer the budget of the town, and to prosecute and defend or compromise litigation, and to report to the Board any wrongdoing of employees, to name a few. There are also, the, the Town Administrator is essentially the CFO of the town as well. So in addition to that, the, along the Town Administrators Act, the town adopted Chapter 41, Section 97A, which is the Strong Chief Statute. That's for the police chief. And the police chief approves the day, approves and adopts and implements policies and procedures for the police department, not the Board, and determines the public safety needs and emergencies of the town that need to be addressed. Anybody have any questions about the Town Administrators Act at all?
Did the town operate a strong chief for the fire department too? I think we did, did we?
Yes.
Oh, I think maybe that was a couple of years ago when you combined, right? So I would need to go back and check that, Alicia. It wasn't on my checklist, but I can, I certainly can get back to the.
I believe we did, that's when we, when we created, because it used to be the Board of Fire Engineers. And now it's the Town of Newbury Fire, and I believe we passed a strong chief at town meeting.
Yeah, that was a special act, right? There was a special act because the Fire, Board of Fire Engineers was under its own special act. And so that had to be kind of undone, so that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions about that? All right. Then just to bring up the Naughtney. How's that?
An old bridge.
That's, wow.
How about that?
What year was that?
I don't know, it didn't have a date on it. One way to keep people off the island, right?
Yeah.
You could really bring the bridge up then. So in 2019, the Board of Selectmen adopted a Code of Conduct. This is not unusual for Newbury. There are many, many Boards of Selectmen across the Commonwealth that in the past five years have started to adopt codes of conduct for themselves, and some for other, for other Boards and Commissions or employees of the town as well. So not unusual, and this is what the Board did in 2019. It adopted this policy. It sets forth the expectation of the members of the Board and each other's conduct. Some of those highlights include acting in the public interest when performing the duties of a selectman, compliance with the laws, conduct of all of the members, respecting the process of the Board in-town government, communication in and out of meetings, confidential information, use of public resources, and respecting the independence of other Boards and Commissions. This Code of Conduct is enforced by and upon the Board, by and among themselves. This is not something that employees can use on the Board or citizens. This is a self-governance document, which almost all of the codes of conduct are related to selectboards in the town, in the Commonwealth that I've seen. So I think that, you know, I don't know, I haven't talked to Tracy about this, it would be interesting. I've seen that typically rating agencies like to see these. It's kind of a, you know, how you put your house in order in addition to the financial aspects of the town and development aspects and master plans. This is one of those documents that oftentimes is helpful to rating agencies. Anybody have any questions about that?
This item here that says respecting the process of the Board in-town government.
Yeah.
What, what exactly do you mean by that?
Well, the, I think when the Board adopted this, the idea was that the Board of Selectmen, well, I like to explain it to different Boards and Commissions like this, that everybody understands what their lane is and stays in their lane. It's kind of the most rudimentary way to describe it, that the, the Board of Selectmen are going to respect their role in-town government in the process of the Board as compared to, let's say, the Planning Board or the Zoning Board, or maybe the Conservation Commission, or the Finance Committee. So let's take the Finance Committee as an example. So the Board of Selectmen has a role in the budgetary process every year. The, according to the Town Administrators Act, the Town Administrator presents a budget to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen approve that budget, adopt it, and then that budget gets thrown on to the Finance Committee. If somehow that process got mixed up, and the Board of Selectmen are the ones that put the budget together and went to the Finance Committee, that would be inappropriate, that would not be respecting your lanes. Similarly, let's, let's say the Planning Board. If somehow, I think the Board or members of the Board tried to unduly influence the Planning Board or members of the Planning Board in particular applications, that would be inappropriate, both actually from a conflict of interest law perhaps, perhaps. But it certainly is reflected in the Code of Conduct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the Open Meeting Law. Some of the basic requirements of the Open Meeting Law are, you know, the basic tenet of the Open Meeting Law, as many of you are aware, is that the public has a right to know how its public bodies are behaving, acting, and what action they're taking. And so you have to give everybody notice. A public body has to give everybody notice when they are meeting. And under the Conflict of, excuse me, the Open Meeting Law in Massachusetts, you have to give at least 48 hours' notice of a meeting unless it's an emergency. And what are emergencies? Emergencies are not, I always say to somebody, if somebody calls me and the, and the sentence begins, I forgot, that is not an emergency. I can just tell them that immediately. An emergency is, there's so much snow that fell, the DPW roof is collapsing, and we need to make a decision fast. An emergency is the high tide at Plum Island is taking houses in, and the Board of Selectmen need to meet and, you know, meet with the Finance Committee to make appropriations from the emergency reserves fast. Those are emergencies. If you have an emergency, you can have a meeting in less than 48 hours' notice, but as soon as you know you're going to have a meeting, you should post the meeting, even if it's an hour, even if it's an hour, you should post the meeting. Every meeting has to have an agenda. So before the revisions to the Open Meeting Law in 2014 now, 2013, it used to be that every town hall, the clerks would post on the wall at the beginning of every year, a calendar that showed everybody's meetings for the year. And that was the posting. But now that is not sufficient. You have to actually have an agenda that is posted as the meeting post, including the date and time and place of the meeting. The agenda has to say on it what the Chair reasonably believes to their knowledge is going to be on the agenda. The Chair sets the agenda. The notice and the agenda are the same thing. And you have to give people reasonable notice. So for example, in a zoning hearing, you have to say, you know, the address, the name of the applicant, and what their relief they're seeking, so people have adequate notice. And there's a number of cases or determinations from the Attorney General's Office related to what adequate notice is and what action is going to be taken. So the Chair sets the agenda. The Chair puts on the agenda what, to their knowledge at the time of posting, is reasonable knowledge to be on the agenda. It could be that within those 48 hours or a week or whenever you post it, something comes up. You can add that to the agenda. If it wasn't, if the Chair didn't reasonably know at the time it was going to need to be on the agenda, you can add it to the agenda. And you can do that within the 48-hour time period. But it has to be something that they didn't reasonably know. And then there have to be minutes of the meeting. The minutes have to come in a, in a due fashion shortly after the meeting's over. And then they have to be approved on a regular basis as well. Does anybody have any questions about the Open Meeting Law, that part of it?
I do.
Yes.
I raised the issue in our last meeting of the draft minutes. And because it contained discussion, but on one topic, there was, which we discussed a great deal, the 14th Street evacuation plan, there was no mention of the discussion. In the meantime, I had an opportunity to look at Robert's Rules, what Robert's Rules said about the minutes. And it indicated, and Alicia, you were correct, that discussion should not be part of the minutes. So it's too bad whoever writes the, the minutes, I believe that's Julie O'Brien, that she's not party to our discussion tonight. But I, I just wanted Alicia to know that she was correct that there should not be any discussion in any of the minutes according to Robert's Rules.
So Jerry, you raised a really good point, and it gives me an opportunity to talk about two things. Robert's Rules are good as a guide, but not necessarily controlling unless the public body has adopted them as the way they are going to run their meeting. So that's the first thing. What has to be in the minutes is actually governed by the Open Meeting Law in Massachusetts. And I, and I, there are two, kind of two theories, and then like the middle theory, right? So minutes are not transcripts.
Correct.
Right, that, so that's really, so there are some people that try to do that, but minutes are not transcripts. Minutes need to say who is in a meeting, what topics were discussed, if there were votes taken, how those votes were taken, and maybe a general description about the discussion that took place, but not a transcript certainly of the discussion that took place. And so the, there's, the Attorney General's Division of Open Government have a couple of decisions on what's adequate for minutes. There's one decision that is a little troublesome, but it was never, it was never appealed. And it's only troublesome insofar as this. There was a discussion at a meeting, and the person taking the minutes had written very specifically about, you know, let's say, three people who spoke in favor of something. And then the minutes reflected that somebody spoke against it, but didn't say why as in greater detail as the people had spoken favor of, right? So the Division of Open Government said that those minutes weren't adequate, that they should have properly reflected the person who spoke against it. But that was because of what had come before that, right? So if you look at the regulations, it's really, it's, it's not a transcript. It's not supposed to go, all the discussion is not supposed to be in the minutes. But a person reading the minutes should have an idea of what occurred at the meeting, but not every single aspect of it.
Okay. So when there was, when there was discussion, but nothing is included that even indicates that there was discussion, then you would say that that would be a defective minute?
Yeah, I think that it would, I think you should say there was discussion, right?
Right.
You know, that's, you should say there was discussion. You don't have to say, you know, all the discussion occurred. But, you know, the Board discussed the matter or something like that.
Okay. So for a topic, because I think this could save Julie a lot of time.
Yeah.
So for a topic, so she needs to record, you know, the time the meeting opened, who attended, who moved, who seconded, and who voted. The agenda item, I think that should be just a topic of what it is.
Yeah.
And then discussion ensued, and this is the vote.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I'm, I'm saying, that, yeah, just a statement. After discussion, the vote was, you know, four to one, or, you know, who voted however. But I mean, just, it, it needs to be consistent.
Right.
If, you can't, you can't.
Yeah.
Accurately tell what, what the description, who said what in, on one item, and then give no discussion on another item.
Yeah.
What, what we were asked to approve the last minutes of our last meeting.
Yeah, so I, oftentimes what I suggest to people is that they take the agenda, and actually I have a number of, of assistants who assist Boards. They take the agenda, right? And they use that agenda as the template for their minutes, right? So they just go down the agenda. Now, it's a little more difficult in our COVID times with these Zoom meetings because everything is a roll-call vote, right? And you have to reflect all of that, certainly the roll-call vote. You can't just say four to one, you have to say.
Right, no, I.
Right. But, but you go down the agenda item, let's just take, let's just say that this slide up here is the agenda. You know, what are the basic requirements? A discussion about the basics requirements, you know, occurred. And, you know, public comment was received, and the vote was, you know, motion was made by Ms. Heavy, a second by Ms. Greco, and the vote was blah, blah, blah.
Right, okay.
Now, what do you mean by public comment was received?
Well, if you, if, if you happen to have had public comment, right? So let's say it was a public hearing, like, like, you know, you were going to issue some kind of, you know, permit. Then you would, then at a public hearing, you know, you always say, anybody there speaking in favor? And then you would have to say, you know, there were, you know, four neighbors speaking in favor, or something like that. And was there anybody there speaking in opposition? There were four neighbors speaking in opposition. And then, you know, the Board made its decision. Or, and not a public hearing where you just have public comment, let's say you had a section of the meeting that was public comment, the minutes should reflect that there was public comment, and, you know, Mary Jones of Main Street and Sally Smith of, you know, Front Street, you know, spoke about, you know, birds on their lawn, or something like that.
Okay.
What about when, when the Board gets letters, you know, writing, you know, like we got, twenty, twenty, I think 25 letters recently against the proposed gas station. How, how is the Chair supposed to handle that? Is he supposed to list every, every, every correspondence by the, you know, a letter from Mrs. Jones on Main Street, a letter.
Right.
Is, I mean, list them out, is that how we're supposed to handle it?
Well, you know, your, your example is a good example because, so that matter is not a matter over which you have jurisdiction right now, right? That's in front of the planning board, but you received correspondence on it. So the Chair can reflect that, the Chair could say, we've received 25 pieces of written correspondence from neighbors regarding the gas station. This is not a topic on our agenda. Please note, these, these letters will be attached to our meeting minutes.
Okay.
Right? So they're just attached to the minutes, and they're made reference to.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So then deliberation. So this is a, this is a, what is deliberation under the Open Meeting Law? So deliberation of the Open Meeting Law is discussion between two or more Board members, or a, not two or more Board members, but a majority of any members of a public body over which the Board has jurisdiction, okay? So if you have a subcommittee of two, subcommittee of two, those two people may not discuss the matter in front of that subcommittee without an open meeting. They have to have an open meeting because they're a subcommittee. If you are exchanging emails between three or more of you of the Board as a whole, and you are going back and forth over anything other than the date of a meeting or scheduling, then that's a deliberation. And you may not do it. If you have telephone calls, this is what used to happen before email, and I can say that because that's when I used to be subject to this, right? If you have telephone calls, we used to go, say, well, let's, I'm going to find out how everybody, you know, thinks about this. So I'm going to call, you know, Member One, and then I'm going to call Member Two, and then I'm going to call Member Three. That's also a deliberation, it's called a serial deliberation. And you can't do that. You can't try to figure out how everybody's going to be on a particular matter, or you can't try to influence your other members' votes over a matter that's before the Board, or over which the Board has jurisdiction. If you think about it, you're the selectboard, you've pretty much got jurisdiction over everything in town. So you have to be really careful about that. So emails can be used to deliver materials and can be used to set a schedule for a meeting. But may, may not be used to go back and forth over what's in that material. For example, let's say I was on a board, and I received a package of material, and I read my materials, and I was shocked at something in the materials. And I replied all, and I said, oh my gosh, did you see item number six? I can't even believe that. There's no way on God's green earth that I would ever vote for item number six. That's a deliberation and a violation of the Open Meeting Law. So that's why you have to be careful on replying to emails and sending emails.
So would it be considered best practice not to email all back?
Oh, absolutely, you should never email all back. Unless it's about scheduling, right? Unless it's about scheduling.
Like when I was trying to schedule this, this training.
Yeah.
I emailed everybody, I said, does this date work for you? That's it.
You can do that all day long, you can do that.
But when the packet comes out, and I have a question on the packet, and I email all, that should not happen.
That's correct. You can email one person, you can email the Chair, or Tracy, better yet, email the. You can email one person, you can email the chair or Tracy, better yet, email the, you know, Tracy or whoever the department person is responsible for that particular item.
Yeah, so I think that's something that I want to take away from from this training is that that we all understand that um, we shouldn't be replying to all. And if you do have questions on the agenda, you don't have to wait till the meeting and go in not understanding. You can reach out to the town administrator or even possibly the chair for clarifying questions.
Correct.
Is it appropriate to even reach out to the chair? Or should you just not talk to anybody?
No, 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 you can, you can reach out to the chair to ask a question about a particular thing, so long as it's in front of the entire board, not a subcommittee.
Okay. We don't have subcommittees, so we don't have to worry about them, thank God.
Right.
Okay. Okay. That's clear to me, is that clear to everybody, anybody else have any questions on that?
I'm good.
That's the biggest trip, trip up for everybody and all over the place, it's tough, because we do so much work on on email. Um, and it's so easy for us just to reply back and say, oh, did you see, you know, what about blah blah blah? And you you just can't do it, you just can't do it. Um, okay, then there's executive session. Uh, and the openly meeting law provides a list of things that are exempt for executive session.
Lisa, can I take you back for one sec?
Sure.
So I'm a little lost, and so I always thought the idea of a five-member board was that supposedly one of us wanted to talk to the chair about a certain thing that was coming up, that's only two members.
Yeah.
That we could do that because that wasn't a majority.
That's correct, you can do that.
All right, it, I kind of in listening to you, I might have taken it wrong, but I took away from that that you didn't have the ability to do that, and I felt that for years, that's what the part of a five-member board allowed you to do.
That's correct, Jeff, you can do that, what I was suggesting is that if you had, if you were on a
I know, reply all, I, I get that, yeah.
So yes, you absolutely can talk to the chair or, you know, one other member about a particular thing, right?
So Lisa, just to not to be bemoan this, but when we were a three-member board, right?
Yeah.
There was, that would not be possible, if you, two people stop talking, that would be deliberation, right?
That's, that's correct, and it is very difficult, I represent a couple of three-member boards. It is very, very difficult, they have to meet frequently. They can't talk amongst one another, you know, except, except for, you know, setting the agenda, uh, the scheduling of the meetings. It is very difficult not to violate the open meeting law.
So this might be part of the reason why I think the general public doesn't understand why we don't, we may appear that we don't know anything about the subject matter before us, because we don't. I mean, we don't talk amongst each other when it's before, or at least I don't. Talk to, you know, when there's an item before me, if I have questions, I may ask JR or I may ask Tracy. But um, I, I don't talk to Jerry about it, I don't talk to Mike about it, you know, I don't talk uh, to just figure out, you know, all that stuff, and I think the public sees that as if we either haven't done our homework or it's, because I've seen, you know, comments in social media, it appears as if, you know, they haven't even discussed this before. But we haven't.
Right, right.
And that's the whole, to me, that's the whole point behind the open meeting law.
Right.
Is that we are a public body that meet in public.
Right.
I don't, you know, I don't think we want the general public to think that we're meeting outside of the public and then determine everything, figure it all out, and then decide to just go forward.
Right, it's, it's awkward, you know, it, it's um, sometimes it's awkward because conversations are difficult. Um, sometimes, particularly when you're just learning things and you have to work through them in public. But you are correct, that is the whole point behind the open meeting law, you should not, and you may not be having these discussions in advance, certainly you can talk to uh, the chair or to Tracy or, and read your materials and do that work. But the work of discussing it amongst one another and understanding how you as a board want to behave or act in a certain way, that's a public discussion. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so then uh, there's executive session, and executive session is a reason not to are reasons not to have a, not to talk about things in public and are very limited by the open meeting law. Uh, the Board of Selectmen um, probably has more reasons than anybody else, any other public body to meet an executive session but for a school committee. The uh, assessors though have special uh, act requirements that they meet in executive session information, but the Board of Selectmen uh, would meet an executive session to, to discuss certain aspects of personnel um, matters uh, when the person being discussed would have a right to be present also. On contract negotiations, if you were negotiating a personnel contract, on the purchase and sale of real estate, uh, where the public discussion of which would have a detrimental impact on the public body. Uh, discussion of litigation, uh, where the public discussion of which would have a detrimental impact on the public body. Uh, public safety, certain public safety items like uh, the location of, you know, uh, of confidential information or a public safety plans, certain public safety plans might be, might fall under one of the exemptions. But those are, um, those are very few and far between, as you know, when you have an executive session, you must open in public first. Then you must take a roll call vote to go into executive session. Uh, the vote has to tell you why you're going into executive session. Uh, for example, uh, to discuss the purchase, exchange or value of real estate. You may not identify the real estate initially, um, because it's a secret, right? Uh, once something has been filed in litigation, you have to name the litigation when you go into executive session. You also have to state that you're gonna come back out into open meeting, or you're not gonna come back out into open meeting. Then you go into executive session, you have your executive session, all votes in executive session are by roll call vote. Then you have to have a roll call vote to leave executive session. What's happens in executive session has to stay in executive session. A member of the board may not disclose what they learned in executive session until the board as a whole releases the minutes for executive session and has determined that the purpose for which executive session was held is no longer necessary. Now, that was a quick primer on executive session, does anybody have any questions about executive session? Yes, Alicia, are you just fixing something or are you raising your
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, Gary came home and he's washing dishes, I'm gonna go unmute.
Okay. Um, don't discourage that behavior. Um, okay, so the next is uh, the public records law. Public records law. Every written record which you keep or make or transmit as a member of the Board of Selectmen is a public record. What about your private notes? So private notes aren't necessarily a public record unless you take them to a meeting and you refer to them in the public meeting. Okay? So there's actually a case um, out of Wayland, Wayland is, the last time Wayland had a case at the SJC, they basically got their hand slapped, they have so many executive session cases at the SJC. Anyway, uh, they were um, hiring or reviewing a superintendent or some department head. And um, a person had personal notes about that review in the meeting. And they've referred to those notes in the public meeting. And then they didn't want to make them part of the record. Uh, and SJC said, nope, contraire, you referred to them in the public meeting, they have become part of the public record. So um, they are public record. Uh, texts, emails, emails, even if they are on your private email are a public record, and I will give you a really scary story. So I represent a town where um, it was about fifteen years ago, um, and there was uh, new members to the Board of Selectmen, and there's a lot of controversy. Um, and finally, after about six months in, it became clear that there's a lot of conversation happening between these board members that was not public. And so the local newspaper asked for copies of all of their emails. Having to do with anything related to their job as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I had to go through, this is no lie, no fewer than fifteen hundred pages of emails to decide whether or not they were uh, public record and could be disclosed or had to be redacted. And they were off of their private email, so they had to get them off of their private email, that town now has control uh, within the town to be able to pull emails from all, all board members, both Board of Selectmen and other boards as well as their employees. So uh, you have to be careful. Um, it just because it's on your private email doesn't make it uh, not a public record. And they are all public records. Um, and uh, you write a memo to the town, it's a public record. Technically, voicemails are public record, although that's a really, really difficult one to enforce. So as I noted earlier, documents referred to in a meeting, so let's say you're in a meeting and you know, you got some material to help back up your point about something and you refer to those um, records, they're technically uh, public records. Uh, documents you created as part of your official duties, those are public records. All emails on a personal computer, as I said, are public records. So you have to be careful, um, just make sure that the documents you have um, and you've created uh, or correspondence you've had as your member of the Board of Selectmen, they all become public records and are subject to uh, the public records law and disclosure. Then also, more recently, um, the public records law was uh, revised and uh, the, every town now or every municipality has a, an agent that they're appoint that is head of their public records, either by department or overall. There's very strict rules on responding to public records requests. Uh, the initial response is ten days, but if the record is readily available, you have to give it to the, give it to the person sooner than that. Folks can be made to pay for public records requests, uh, that would include the amount of money needed to duplicate those records. In addition to the time uh, that it takes the official to pull the records together, which is really the the most costly part of this and quite frankly disruptive part of it. So there's, uh, that's completely legitimate to charge for that time uh, and the cost to duplicate it, or you can ask for the documents to be provided in electronic format. Does anybody have any questions about the public records law?
Yes, I do, who is Newbury's, New, yeah, Newbury's um, person, Tracy or?
Um, I believe it's, I do believe it's Tracy, um, and um, the uh, I don't believe that it's the um, clerk. A lot of towns have the town clerk depending on how busy folks are. Um, but I believe it's Tracy because she's the one that organizes it all. Like it's, when a rec, when a complicated quest comes in, uh, I get Tracy emails me about it, and then she, she's very uh, diligent about how those responses go out. So I believe it's her, Jerry, off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're right, and I think that the request can come in through the town clerk though.
Yeah, oh, no, it can, um, as opposed to the official records agent. It can come in a number of places, and you can have records agents, like you could have a records agent for the police department and for the fire department and, you know, for whoever. Um, I think in towns about your size, folks try to keep it more controlled to make sure that, that they get responded to. Um, what used to happen is that they would get lost, right? So it would come in across a desk and that somebody'd say, oh, I'd get to that, I'll get to that, right? And then, and then it would get lost and forgot to, the whole per, point about the change in the public records law is to make sure that, quite frankly, they kept track of. And there's a log of it, and you know when it was responded to, when it was received, what the response was. Were you paid for the, you know, the request? Did you provide the final documents?
And made sure that it's done within the, the proper timeframe, because I think is there's a financial implication if it's not, correct?
You can't, you can't, if it's not done with the, if you don't follow the right steps, you can't collect the money uh, for the, the cost to um, to provide the documents. And you can, I mean, if it's complicated, you don't have to give the documents in ten days, you can say, look, it's gonna take me twenty-four hour, twenty-four person hours to get these documents. And it's gonna cost, you know, approximately a hundred dollars or whatever it is. Um, and I will be able to do that in a month, right? If, if it's difficult, you got a lot of research, you're not required to drop everything in order to respond to a public records request. But if it's readily available, you need to get it to somebody in a timely fashion. You're also not required to create a document that you don't have, right? So there are a lot of phishing agencies, phishing not F I S H, but P H I S H. Uh, phishing agencies that look for information so they can do advertising and things like that, right? Um, they'll make a request of the treasurer, for example, I want a copy of all, I want a copy of a list of, you know, every employee and, you know, what their pay is and, you know, all these details. Well, you may not keep a list, right? You might have a data bank that has all that information in it, and you might be able to create a document that's requested, but you don't have to create that document. I get, I get, uh, there was a couple, I don't know, before COVID, there was a request that went out that was a copy of all RFPs, on a list of all RFPs that you've issued for, I don't know what it was, you know, widgets in the last year, right? Well, the town didn't have a list of all the, you know, RFPs they issued for widgets in the last year. So we said we can't respond to the request, there's no document responsive to that request. So the idea
And that's the prices?
Yes, because you don't have to create the document. So the idea is that if the document exists, you need to provide it in a reasonable manner and you may be compensated for it. If the document doesn't exist, you don't have to create it.
Very good.
Any other questions about the public records law? All right. So I'm gonna do a, a high level on the conflict of interest law, and I can give you some examples, or if you have other questions, feel free to ask me about this as well. So the general rule, this is like the basic rule. Do not use your official position to gain an advantage that a private citizen would not otherwise be entitled to, okay? That is the basic rule, and if you follow that rule, you will or should stay out of trouble. The other rule that I don't have written down here, but I'm gonna tell you is if you ever questioned what it is that you may think you want to do, haven't done it yet, but you want to do, ask first. You can ask me or you can ask the Ethics Commission in advance. The Ethics Commission won't answer your question if you've already done it, because they're an enforcement agent and they're required to enforce. So you need to ask them in advance, so for example, uh, let's say, uh, let's say Jeff, uh, uh, somebody wanted to appoint him to, I don't know. Somebody wanted to appoint him to another board that was paid, let's say, I don't know, some private entity that was paid, but also did business before the town. So Jeff gets that request and he comes to me or goes to the Ethics Commission and says, hey, I'm a, a member of the Select Board in Newbury, uh, but I've been asked by XYZ Corporation to sit on their board and I get paid for that. And the Select Board approves, you know, licenses for this commission, right, or this body. Well, he hasn't done it yet, so he can call up the Ethics Commission or email them or ask me and say, hey, here's, here are the facts. Can I do this? And I can give a written opinion or the Ethics Commission can give a written opinion. Uh, and then you can rely on that opinion, but it has to be in advance, okay? So always ask before. So always ask before, right? In this instance, you always have to ask for permission. It's too late when you have to ask for forgiveness. Uh, and do not use your official position to gain an advantage that a private citizen would not otherwise be entitled. Okay? So you can rely on our opinions, so that, let's say I tell Jeff, oh yeah, you can go ahead and do that.
Is that, is that actually what you would tell me? It's kind of curious.
No, I would not tell you that. No, definitely not.
That might be pretty good, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a good deal, Jeff. I would not tell you that. And the Ethics Commission would not tell you that. So, but if I did tell him that, or let's say the Ethics Commission did tell him that, and my, and Jeff had given us the actual fact, that's why both Jeff and my, I mean, the Ethics Commission and myself would want the facts in writing. What are the facts? So I can issue my opinion on those facts, because then Jeff's gonna rely on my opinion, and then when he gets in trouble, he's gonna come back and say, hey, this opinion is my defense, right? But if the facts of the situation are actually different than the facts he told us, well, that's a problem. You can't rely on the opinion anymore. But if they're the same, the opinions are a defense for him, and he won't be found liable for that. Another rule, don't take gifts over fifty dollars. And so here's a trick question, right? If somebody gives a gift to all the board members, let's say we were all not in COVID anymore, and y'all sitting there, and somebody comes in and gives the board like a giant uh, Harry and David basket, right? Say they go, say, set it in front of JR. They say, here you go, JR. And JR says, okay, everybody can have this, everybody in this room, they can have this. Can you do that?
Depends on who's in the room.
That's a good question.
The answer is yes. JR, if you share it with everybody, okay? If you share it with everybody and don't keep it for yourself, y'all can have that gift. But if you ca- take it home with you, go, whoa, be quiet, I'm gonna put it under my coat and take it home, that's a problem.
What hap- what happens if the gift basket was worth 300 bucks?
You can do it if you share it. So I, I gave you that example because sometimes, like, you know, people will go into the, you know, the planning office or the treasurer's office or the clerk's office, and they'll have, you know, they'll have a gift and they'll put it on the counter, right? Or they'll give it to the, whoever, the department head. If the department head leaves it on the counter and lets everybody share that, that's okay. If the department head puts their coat over it, takes it out to the car, that's a problem. All right? But they, you can share stuff like that. I have a town that has a policy for the entire town that nobody um, is permitted to take a gift at all. Um, so, it, you know, you, I think you just gotta use your head. Training sessions versus trips. So um, a private entity can pay you to go on a training session related to your job as a member of the Select Board. So let's say there's a training session in uh, I don't know, Virginia, uh, about uh, you know, barrier beaches, okay? And the uh, XYZ Beach Corporation says, look, I'm gonna send you all down to this training session. Uh, and you can do that. You can go to that training session, and they can pay for that. That's different than you're gonna buy a brand-new fire truck from, I don't know, what's the name of the company out in Minnesota? Pearson? And one of those big fire truck companies, right? And they love doing this. They call up the fire chief and they say, hey, we'll fly you out here to see the truck. Uh, that you cannot do. The fire chief cannot say, yes, please, I'll, I'll accept your, you know, hotel, food, and flight out to Minnesota to see the fire truck. Can't do that. That's different. This is not an issue that you guys face very frequently, and most people don't, but you should know about it. Uh, and the last don't do is you may not represent a third party before the town while a member of the board. What does that mean? So uh, Jerry, I don't think you practice law anymore, but let's say you did, you don't, do you practice anymore?
I don't. I don't.
So let's say you did, right? And somebody came to you and said, hey, Jerry, uh, look, I need some help in front of the zoning board. Uh, can you help me out? And you say, yeah, let me see what I can do. And so you, you go and you represent them in front of the zoning board. Um, that's a third party being represented in front of the town by you. You can't do that, not allowed to do it. Or let's say there's a vendor, let's say there's a, a person who sells um, sandbags, right? And uh, they go to you, Alicia, and they say, hey, I need um, I need you to help me out to get this contract with the town. I need you to come help me make a presentation to the Conservation Commission about how great my product is. You can't do that. That's a third party. You're not allowed to represent them in front of a town entity.
What about, what about, because this, this did happen to me, um, what about a, representing your neighbors to the, the town, like a neighborhood spokesperson?
Um, so that is a, a little more difficult. Uh, and the question is, are you, and, and this is, it's difficult, because when do you put your hat on and when do you take your hat off, right? So are you representing them as a neighbor, like one of the neighbors, or are you representing them as a member of the Board of Selectmen? Right?
Yeah.
So um, I'm gonna do a little more basic thing. Let's say that um, I am, I'm gonna use me. Let's say that I have uh, the guy across the street from me, I'm, I'm on the city council, and the guy across the street from me um, is uh, needs a special permit uh, for his house. He goes to the zoning board, and I go to the zoning board because all the neighbors are upset about it. I can't, I can't do that unless I'm speaking for myself to protect my property rights, right? So if you're representing constituents, you have to be clear about that, that you are representing constituents before board, you need to be careful that you're not representing the board in front of another board. It's hard to take that hat off and on.
So as long as you're abundantly clear that you're not speaking on behalf of any board that you're a member of, you're speaking as a private citizen.
Right. You gotta be careful.
Yep, you gotta be careful. And then um, the other piece of it is um, well, let's say my neighbors came, came to me and said, you know, um, you, you need to, you know, there's a problem and you need to go fix it. I shouldn't do that. I should tell them, you need to email the town administrator. Don't give it to me, because that's what I would do.
Right, or, or you can, or you can say to the town administrator, look, these people came to me, can you just look into it? I'm done. Right? Look into it, I'm done, and, you know, go talk to the various department heads. Right? I, I mean, I think you're, you're elected officials, right? So you need to represent your constituents, but you have to learn where to put that, draw that line, right? You have to be very careful about that, that it doesn't affect your property interest, right? So that's the difference. Let's say um, none of you live on, none of you live on Plum Island, right?
No.
No. Okay. So let's say uh, that uh, somebody on Plum Island came to you and said, uh, look, you know, all of my houses, my house has fallen in the water. I need you, I need you to, I need you to do something. Well, you're a board member, so you come to the board as a whole, and you say, look, we've got to do something about these houses on Plum Island. They're falling into the water. So you all have a discussion about that as a board, right? So you've now represented the interest of a constituent that doesn't affect your property interest. That's the difference. If-
Okay.
Let's say, Alicia, you lived on Plum Island, and your house was falling into the water, was right next to the house falling into the water, and the person came to you and said, look, we've got to do something about this. And you're like, you're darn right we do, because my property's fallen into the water too. And you brought that to the board, that becomes a bigger problem.
Okay.
If that, in that instance, I would have you go to the town administrator and say, look, all this stuff is happening out here. I've got to step away from it because it's my property too, but y'all need to do something, you know, see, you know, start to address these issues.
Yep. Okay, that's clear to me. Anybody have any questions on that?
Okay. Um, all right, so that's that, and I think there we go. That ends my presentation for this evening. All right? Um, if anybody has any follow-up questions, feel free to email me or call me at any time, as you know.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Thank you.
I'm going to dinner.
All right.
Leaves, we need to close the meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to close the meeting.
Okay, uh, roll call of vote, uh, Mike Doyle.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Yes.
Jerry Heavy.
Yes.
Alicia Greco.
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Have a good night, everyone. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Bye-bye.
Bye.